Everyone, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. The entity for which it stands as a foundation under God, in this law. We have a few changes just to the order of our agenda this evening, based on presentations. So we will be proceeding first to Eastern Suffolk Voces, followed by K-12 Writing, followed by a Marsden Update, and then our Public Input.
We'll do the cell phone policy before the Marsden Update and then Public Input.
Great. So with that, we'll turn it to Eastern Suffolk Voces.
So I'll just introduce two members here who are members of the Eastern Suffolk Voces Board. John Weish and Anne Macacy. For those of you who don't know, they've been serving for quite a long time. Anne was a former member of the Board of Education in Sag Harbor for many years when I first came to the district. So we thought it would be appropriate for them to come here and you guys to sort of get to know them a little bit. Nothing elongated, but I'll give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Jeff. It's good to be back in this room. I'm sorry Sandy's not here. I miss her.
I'm here.
Of course you are. Yeah, I was elected. I was. I filled a vacancy on this board. I want to go back. My son was in the middle school, so it goes back quite a long time over. I want to say it was, I think, seventy-nine, eighty. Then there was a vacancy on the Voces Board. So just coincidentally, that. Matt's father was the principal, superintendent in Southampton. And he called our superintendent, John Barnes, to say, "You think Anne Macacy would run for that vacancy?" And I knew nothing. And I said, "Okay." And it was August. And well, it's just some fluke. I was elected. And I'm very happy that I was. That was the late eighties. John was the longtime president of the Pre-Hampton Board. And goes back to the old Voces One before Voces One and Two merged, which is twenty-six years. But there used to be two Voces on the board of Eastern Long Island. And now it's Eastern Suffolk Voces because of the merge. So John goes back as an original member of Voces. But we knew each other locally. At one time, Pre-Hampton and Sag Harbor were doing some shared services. We were combining some classes. And it was, it was a great time. It's, a lot has changed. I am running again. I had to kind of struggle with the decision to run for another three-year term, but the work we do is, is really very important work on all of Long Island. And I'm, we're just leaving packets for you because it's really too much to try to explain what a Voces does in even an hour. What I suggest for people who might have students interested in careers in techs, in the arts, in, you might need an autism or a special ed program. We contract with the districts and municipalities. We do shared services. So I suggest you look up the easternsofficvoces.org website for any questions. That, just to go over, it's a very thorough, very, very well-done website. And it's constantly kept up to date and it really explains the programs, the mission. And what would you add? What else do you think about?
Let's start. Remember, we'd be here all night, but.
Programs, right. Major programs.
Which one? Aviation, the dental program.
Mary's daughter's a graduate of the aviation program. She's a pilot.
There's also the fashion. What I push is for young people to grow in maybe the automotive, through the carpentry program, be plumbing. But you know, right now, the plumbers on the East End, you know, they're making more than twenty dollars an hour. So if a young person, if a young person can take those technical programs, we also provide college courses. So that means you could go away to college. You could come home in the summer. You could work for a plumber. You could work for an electrician. So those are the programs that I try to push on some of our students on the East End because the opportunities are here for them and they can make a lot of money when they come home from colleges, et cetera. So I get a little passionate about those. But on the East End, if they don't live on the East End, it might take them two days to get here. But if they're here, it's, it's just so valuable. I mean, it's nothing can be taken away from them. And after they get out of college, it's a hard time to get a job. It's got something to fall back on. And every one of our automotive students almost always get a job in Riverhead or somewhere on the North Fork at one of the.
Or even an out-of-state and win a lot of awards. So we're pathways. We provide a lot of pathways, whether you're going on in education or you're going onto a career. We have major adult ed classes. We educate homeless students. We educate migrant students. So again, all of this, people don't, I learn every time I'm at a Voces Board meeting. And it's been, I think, twenty-five or twenty-six years. So serving, serving the geographic that we have, as you all know, making, making connections geographically is, is something of an art in education and culturally in so many ways. So does anybody have any questions or anything, comments, other than I'm glad to see you? Glad to see some old, old friends. And very glad that you asked. Mayor, Sandy, are you there?
I am. How are you, Anne? It was good to see you.
Sorry you're not here, hon.
Yeah, I, I miss you. I miss your, all your expertise and your calmness that you brought to the board for all those years. It was fabulous.
Okay, calm. Okay, that's, that's good to hear.
Any board questions?
Yes, anybody.
I have a question. So, I mean, the Voces programs, like they're, you know, fantastic for these different pathways. But I just was curious, what role that you guys play as board members in terms of bringing the programming out east? Or, you know, when we're looking at, when we're reviewing our budget, right? We're always told, "Oh, we do this through a Voces property contact." Like what role as board member can you do in kind of directing people on Voces to go find, get this coaching power, find these different avenues for contact and stuff like that?
We're really oversight. We, as, as any school board, there is a difference between a local board and a Voces board. We're fifteen members per star. From the entire range from Montauk, we serve from Montauk to Brettwood. New York State has Voces in every area and county have Voces. The focus, I think, of various ones varies depending on where they are in the state. We approve the administrative, we approve the budget that goes out to the local board, which you vote on the administrative book budget. We are not taxpayer-supported. The districts buy the service. So that really is done through some negotiation. It's done through requests from districts. Can you provide this? Can you provide? Do you provide? Then that it's really, a board really has oversight. We can suggest. And we certainly work with our administrators and have close relationships with our administrators. So something like, I know, not too far back, we brought up, can there be a restaurateur program? Can there be a marine program on the East End? Finding a home is tough because how is it, where is it going to be physically hosted and located? The districts request us. We don't move in. So we, that's why we welcome, and again, John and I are the East End relation. Every, every board member has a district that they, you can call us. You can certainly visit a campus. I remember years, years, years ago on this board, I had been to Riverhead, the H.B. Ward campus, which had a very good culinary, has the wonderful culinary program because the then superintendent was friendly with the Voces One superintendent. We would go up for meetings and have lunch. And I had not really gone further, you know, so good thirty years ago, one of the members here had a great interest for personal reasons in special ed. She took us on a tour on a bus to the West Hampton Beach setting. We, I never thought that children as severely handicapped, because every child, the law is, you educate every child. These were children on feeding tubes, on gurneys, who could press perhaps a button on a computer. It was absolutely exciting, it's not the word. It was overwhelming to see what educators can do. And that, I think, I think that was one of the good experiences I had as a precursor because I knew that, and that was only as far as West Hampton. I mean, highly, highly challenged children and adults. So you, I want to, I deviated a little bit from your question, but your request, you talked, the key, I think, is our guidance in our schools, our guidance departments, knowing what we do. And of course, our administrators. Now Jeff knows, so don't worry about Jeff. But our guidance administrators need to be able to steer the student who's not quite sure what they're doing yet. Maybe they're going to go to Suffolk for two years. Well, they can do that also in team, in tandem with a Voces level. So there's an awful lot of constant creativity. We really, we really, we've, we formed academies a few years ago so that to raise the academic level. And we offer a much higher scale of academics now than when my kids were here. When my oldest child was here, Voces and Sandy, and she were contemporary, Voces was kind of not where you wanted to go. And when you caught the bus at noon, it was an embarrassment. It was somehow shame, shame. That's really totally changed because of what we do.
I tell people all the time that Kevin, Kevin Maple is a graduate of Voces. Tells everybody, went to France somewhere to learn, but he, so that's the type of people that are roaming around. He doesn't even know.
Maybe not everybody knows who Kevin Maple is, John. But the hairdresser to the stars, right? He is one of our graduates and he's been very generous in speaking and supporting.
We also support about local urgent, so we get a lot of requests from, well, hospitality is one of them. But we get, we get requests from like business people, electricians and carpenters who need students. So that's another thing that drives us to put our programs in. And a lot of times we try to put them locally, but sometimes it doesn't work in a local school district. Sometimes we try to get a program going so that kids won't have to go as far. Once we did a nursing, did automotive at Southampton, I think. So some of the schools.
And there's something in Southampton now, Hampton Bays. Yeah, there's a lot of creativity because it's been supported.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. My cards, their email, and John's. Well, you can reach me. Thanks, everybody.
So the next item is K-12 Writing?
Yep, let's do it. So, writing is tomorrow.
So I'll just say a word about it that we usually do. We should perform these educational presentations a year. And writing, I think, is one of the most important disciplines that students learn when they go through our school district. And it's not only about the process of putting pen to paper or typing nowadays, but it's also the thought processes that go into organizing your thoughts and being able to articulate a point, doing the research, all those types of things. So tonight, Mr. Malone and Ms. Carrier are going to provide an overview along with some faculty members of the K-12 continuum. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. And Matt Malone, I'm the elementary principal. Ms. Carrier, the principal at Pearson High School, Middle School, along with Mike Gunnett, our high school assistant principal. And a few representatives from our faculty are here tonight, as Mr. Nichols mentioned, to provide an overview of our K-12 writing program. This is an important presentation. I'm glad there's such a big crowd here tonight for this. I didn't realize we'd get such a, it's good to have everyone here. I think the goal, the goal tonight is to kind of illustrate what writing looks like in our classrooms. Clearly, you're going to see differences across the grade levels. Writing at a kindergarten, first grade level looks quite different than what takes place at the high school level. The expectations clearly progress as we, we go up the line. But what I hope, and I, and I think you'll see, is there are some, some common threads throughout the program. Well, that's going to, that will be clear tonight. And really, we're all, we're all kind of rowing in the important direction of, of developing children who can, will become young adults and adults that write well. We want them to be confident with their writing. And to get there, that takes a lot of practice. Writers have to write often. Good writers need to be able to write in a variety of formats. Writers need to persevere through writing tasks that they're given. Writing truly is, is a process. And it one, it's one that takes a lot of work. We want our writers to experiment and work with language. In doing so, they're often referencing mentor texts. They're introduced to, of writers to use as.
Your name to my name.
Tonight, we will be talking about the writing process, revising, editing, et cetera. At the, at the elementary school, I have invited a few of the teachers. I'm going to invite them up. Ms. Prakoski, Kate Prakoski is a first grade teacher. April Carone, who teaches second grade, and George Neeland, who's one of our fifth grade teachers. And they're with us tonight to speak specifically about writing at the elementary school grades, K through five. This summer, and I appreciate the efforts that they put in this summer. They gathered and spent some time looking carefully at our program as it, as it stood, as it stands, and made sure that we continually revise that program, look carefully at the New York State expectations or as we're, are referred to as the New York State standards in writing, and did make some important revisions to our program and have been sharing that with their fellow faculty members through, throughout the school unit. So with that, I guess I'll turn things over to Ms. Prakoski and we'll share with you what writing looks like at the elementary school.
So when we met over the summer, one of the first things that we felt like we needed to do was really go through the curriculum at the New York State level and find out exactly what was expected for grades K through five. So this is what this shows you with standards one through four. Standards one through four go through third grade, and then there's an additional standard that's added in fifth grade. And what we found was that even starting in kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade, they were all, all the students were writing the same types of writing pieces. Every grade level is responsible for writing an opinion piece, a narrative piece, an expository piece, and then responding to literature that they're reading, you know, in their daily reading activities. So with that, we were kind of looking forward to putting this new writing program into effect because it, we, it allowed us to do less writing pieces, but to dig deeper with those writing pieces. And I think opinion was kind of new for a lot of us. So that's been kind of fun. And what we decided with the narrative piece was that at the different grade levels, when grade levels met, they could decide what sort of narrative they were doing. Now, at the lower grades, we decided it's probably best to do a personal narrative, a story about their lives because it's simpler, it's something they can grasp. And then we decided, starting at grade three, that's probably where teachers might want to get into more creative narratives. You know, fictional with characters, maybe historical fiction or science fiction. So we kind of left it up to the different grade levels to decide that. At the, I can tell you, at the first grade level, we decided to stay with personal narrative. And for nonfiction, we are doing animal research projects, which is actually our next writing unit. And I'm super excited about that. So. Slide. Um, you go one more slide. So you can see that there's an extra standard up there for grades four and five. And what that is, is really the preparing for those state assessments, you know, writing to a piece of text that they're reading, analyzing, looking, studying pictures, and then being able to create, you know, an introduction with supporting details, a conclusion. So that's why you don't see that standard at grades K through three. So that's the extra standard that you see up there. And then the other piece that we took a look at, you can go one more slide, is the spelling and mechanics that's expected at different grade levels. And what they've done is they've categorized it into K to two and three to five. And it increasingly gets harder, obviously. So what we're working on at different grade levels is editing checklist to have the kids accountable for what they should be looking for. You know, at my grade level, it's capitals, punctuation, minor spelling. So, you know, we teach things through our foundations program, like trick words, so they should know how to spell the trick words and sight words correctly. But obviously, that would increase at the upper grade levels. So we put that slide in there. And then as we were discussing our writing workshop, what we decided was that we really wanted every teacher that was being handed this document to know the process of writing and for the students to really understand the process of writing. So even before pre-writing, there's a little piece in there that we do a lot of, and that's immersion. So whatever sort of writing unit we are doing, we do a ton of immersion, a week to two weeks. If we're studying nonfiction, we spend a week to two weeks on just reading nonfiction. What do you notice? What is the writer doing? What is the writer's purpose in this? So that actually comes before pre-writing. And then pre-writing is when they're brainstorming. What is it that you want to write about? Let's generate a list of ideas. And then from there, after they have a list of ideas, they go into drafting. And drafting is not just one piece that they're working on. Drafting, what we do is we like to call them seed ideas. So they're developing seed ideas. They're, maybe they're writing a piece about getting a new dog one day. And then the next day, they're writing about something they did over the weekend. So in their writing folder or their writing notebook, they have multiple pieces to choose from. So that when it comes time for the next phase, which is revision, they get to pick one piece that they want to make better. And they spend a lot of time in drafting and revising because we're really trying to get them to dig deeper and make their writing better. And understanding that writing is not always perfect and how can you make it better? And that comes a lot with, you know, teacher conferences, peer conferences, which you'll get to see a little later in the slides. So they spend a long time there. And then we go into the editing phase, which we talked about, the editing, spelling and mechanics, and then finally publishing. And publishing does not always have to be a typed copy made into this like beautiful book. I'm going to show you in a, in a little bit, our first launch published piece. And it was a handwritten draft with a picture. So it's different for the different units. So those, that's really kind of what we wanted the kids to understand and take ownership of, ownership of it. So by fifth grade, when they leave us, they really have ownership over the writing process.
Hi, so I'm April and I'm going to talk to you about the structure of Writer's Workshop. That is just the huge part of Writer's Workshop and it's really where you are not teaching to the writing. We're trying to teach the individual writer. And so we start that off with our mini lesson. We often gather students onto a carpet or at their desk, and we start off with a connection where we put today's work into the context of children's ongoing work. And then we explicitly name what we're going to teach for today. For example, I might, we might start off with, yesterday, we learned that writers develop a strong read because they want to hook their writers and read, you know, the rest of the story. Today, I want to show you something else that writers do. Today, I want to show you how to keep your readers interested by using exact and descriptive words or honest and precise words. We then move into the teaching part of that architecture of the mini lesson. And we teach students a craft we hope they will use as they write. Here, we may use a mentor textbook. These mentor textbooks are books that we've read several times to the children. They know these books well. The first time you read it, you're just reading it for enjoyment. And then the next time you dive deeper into it, and then you can refer back to it in your mini lessons as well as when you're conferencing. So this is a very effective technique that we use because these are the published pieces that we aspire to. These are the published writers that we want to try to become like. So we often, once we go into the teaching part of the mini lesson, we might model that and say something like, "Oh, you know, you know how guys were reading Fireflies? I love the way that Julie Brinko uses exact and descriptive word." This makes it possible for the reader to visualize the themes in the story. I feel like I'm reading the story with them. So then I might read aloud some parts of that. So to give you an example, and you don't have to reread the whole story. They already know the story. So it was growing dark. My treehouse was a black shape in the tree and I wouldn't go up there now. But something flickered there a moment. I looked and it was gone. So that word flickered is an exact, precise word that helps your readers visualize what's going on in the story. And I teach second grade, so most of these writers would write, but something was shining there or something was bright up there. And so when you use the word flickered, it really helps create a visual image, image in your reader's mind. And that's what's going to keep your readers to want to continue reading. Another example, just very quickly, would be, "I forked the meat and corn and potatoes in my mouth." "I forked the meat and potatoes and corn in my mouth." So you can imagine this child wanting to go out there and collect those fireflies so quickly. And, you know, again, in second grade and first grade, they might write, "I put the pork, I put the meat and corn into my mouth." So this is an example of how you would refer to a mentor text. And then I would model how, "Oh, I want to be just like Julie Brinko and I'm going to try to write exact, precise words in my writing." After that, you have an active engagement where you have the children try it. You might ask them to reread some of their writing that they've placed. You might ask them to partner up and kind of reread it to each other. And thereby, you're, they're helping each other. Like, "Oh, well, what do you mean by put? What about a word like fork or quickly or something more exact?" Then we move into the link part where we remind students what they should try in their own writing. So something we might say is, "So today, see if you're able to reiterate, you know, so-so words with exact and descriptive words and let your readers feel like they are in the story with you." Move thumbs up if you're ready to go. And then the teacher sends the kids off to write up next slide. And now is the part where they're writing. And you'll see a video clip of students writing. Some of them will sit at tables. Some of them will go to their individual special spots to do their very best writing. And that's when teachers go around and re-conference with students, often referring to any mentor texts. We often carry a stack of books with them so that they're pulled out at any, at any moment. Next slide, please. The share is another really important part of the structure of a, the architect of a mini lesson because it's here where you might find that child who did use those exact, precise words, let's say. And then you make them famous. So the share could be that the child reads a paragraph of where they've used exact, precise. So the share could be that the child read um, a paragraph of where they've used exact precise words, or where they've used a craft of writing uh, that you've asked them to try. Or it could be that you have them sitting in a circle and they all read that one word. Uh, so it really, the shares can look very different. Uh, shares can even be where you say, okay, partner up and, and read your stories to each other. It's a very powerful piece, because the children learn to be respectful and written to each other, but they also learn so much from each other, and they'll be, oh, I want to do just what Kyle does, and I'm going to do that tomorrow. And so the structure and the, uh, Writer's Workshop is just a very powerful way to teach writing as well as uh, reading. Thank you.
So I think, Mr. Fisher, that this will give the audience just a quick visual of everything that Ms. Karun just mentioned, that while the students are writing, this is writing in action. You can see there's, students have selected quiet spots in the room. The teacher has opportunity to be with students on an individual basis, but it's really a, if this is the working time, and it's a time where writers respect one another, give each other the quiet and the space that they need to, to really spend time with, with their writing desks.
Hello, my name is uh, George Neeland, and I teach fifth grade at the elementary school. Um, and one of the books that we use, not only in elementary school, but in middle school and in high school sometimes, uh, one of the, one of the characters, Tio Luis, is spoken to by Esperanza's mother. And Tio Luis had given an offer for marriage, and Mama says, frankly, your offer offends me. Then Tio Luis's face hardened like a rock, and the muscles twitched in his narrow neck. What does that show us about Tio Luis? How's he feeling? Right, stressed, angry, indignant. And we find that often, as, as Ms. Karun was saying, with the writers, they love to say, he was angry. You know, she felt happy. We're not really saying anything there. And when we're in the Writer's Workshop, we're there to give goosebumps. And that's where we get into, probably what I feel is the most important part of the writing process, or my favorite part, and it has to do with revision. A few quotes about revision. This from Robert Corvane. The beautiful part of writing is that you don't have to get it right the first time, unlike, say, a brain surgeon. Elmore Leonard said, when you write, you have to leave out the parts readers skip. And the great John Irving with uh, The World According to Garp, half my life is an act of revision. It truly is, uh, what I think, you know, the greatest part of the writing process. And it's a part in which writers have a chance to add to their writing. Sometimes, and very importantly, they need to remove a lot from their writing. Okay, uh, they also have to move things around, and they have to recognize a flow to their writing, and sometimes they may have to substitute. And when we do revising, we talk about mentor texts, um, this can be one of them sometimes that we use. This may be one that we use from Patricia Palaco. And we may teach four or five different writing strategies, some of, some of those which you will do earlier. But we teach them, we try to teach them at a higher level or deeper level, and we expect a little bit more sophistication so that, um, again, we can help our readers visualize and really get them engaged and connect them to the writing, especially, for example, if we're doing a narrative. Can we bring them in, and can we engage them so they can really fully appreciate and understand, connect to that important moment that the writer is trying to write about? So so when we do revision, it's a very important, it's a very important time, and like, yeah, let's take, okay, well, so when we go to look at students' writing and, and see what they're doing with their revising and their editing, we will often have conferences with them, and, and we try to have them as often as possible. They are extremely important tools to the writing process and for the students. There's conferencing, which I can walk around, I can do a lesson on adjectives. I can just roll, roll around the classroom, take a look and see how you're doing, and see if you're um, implementing some strategy you talked about. And then there's conferencing, in which a more formal conference, in which we will sit down with the students, and we'll bring them in, and hopefully we can get two, four, or five students per period if possible. And we'll have a conference, um, that is, this, this has been cut down a little bit, but we're going to play this in a second, and it's extremely important time in which the writer gets to talk about his or her writing. It's a time in which they can point something out to a teacher that they're working on. It's a time in which the teacher can really applaud them and laud them, but also teach them maybe one or two teaching points, and possibly even bringing a mentor text to reinforce a strategy that we've been trying to teach. And it's, and I feel the greatest thing is with the conferences, it's a chance for the child to gain joy from their writing, because a lot of these young writers, they're not really sure what they're doing. They really aren't, I mean, it's a, it's, writing is a hard process, and they want to be lauded, and they're out there putting their feelings out in the line, and they're trying to be, they're trying to be vulnerable, vulnerable and give more. And they're trying to play, and they're trying to experiment, and that's what makes writing great. So here we'll see some snippets of a writing conference.
Hi, Cade. How you doing?
Good.
Good. How's your writing going?
Pretty good.
Good, it's going, going better now?
Yeah.
I know you got stuck there for a while, but you feel much better about it? Good, one thing that I want to tell you, that you're doing really well on your writing, I'm really excited about this, is the detail that you're putting in. So when we talked about the show Don't Tell strategy, I loved what you did here. Um, especially when you start talking about how when you go out to get Wally, right, to go find Wally, you talk about the gray sky, I can taste the dampness in the air. Um, the, the cold wind that's like swishing your shirt back and forth, that was a great detail, right? And then, um, and then you're just racing down the hill, and you talk about like riding over the pebbles and the sounds that it makes. Like, that's so, that's so real, and I connected to that, and I know that if one of your peers reads that, that's really going to connect for them, right? They're going to be really engaged. So I think you're doing a great job with the show Don't Tell. I think if we put something in like a, a little story like that we remember, it's going to allow your reader to really feel that strength and the love that you have for Wally, right? Because you're remembering back about Wally. So which one of those do you think might make more sense that you would like to try in your writing?
Probably like putting a story in there.
Yeah, I think that'd be a neat idea. We, we call that a flashback. And actually, um, Patricia Palaco used that in one of, uh, one of her stories, and I think that'd be a neat idea. Where do you think in your, in your story, you might be able to use that flashback?
Probably what I have, when I go to Mr. Jones's house. I ride over to Mr. Jones's house, and I ask him, if you have seen Wally, my dog. He said no, in concern points, with his eyebrows up, I started to think all hope was lost.
I love, that could be a great entry point, right? In which you, right then, I remember back to Wally and I playing the fact that how you drove this, you know, whether it's a stick or however, you know, however that'd be, and you could put in a few sentences there. So I think that's a great spot, so maybe we could make a little asterix or highlight there.
How about probably like, right here?
Right now?
Right.
Right there, I think that's a good place for that. So why don't you mark that there, and then you can go back and work on doing your little flashback memory? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, well, good, glad to hear about the progress you're making, I'm looking forward to hearing more, alright?
Okay, so that was our friend Cade, who lost his dog, Wally, ran out of the house, and we're not sure exactly where he went, but Cade was obviously very worried and had to tell his parents, and spent a lot of time finding his dog. Thankfully, there's a positive ending to that. So that was one of our formal writing conferences. You can go, go to the next slide.
Right, so just real quickly, this just kind of gives you a um, example of some first grade. Now, this is the very beginning of the school year during our launch unit, you're really just trying to get them to write about anything. They could do nonfiction, they could do fiction, they could do a story about their lives. Um, so what you're seeing up here on the draft side is, um, one of my students, Joey, is really into volcanoes. So he decided, he knows a lot about volcanoes, so his story, he just gave me a ton of facts about volcanoes. And he was just kind of enjoying it, enjoying the, the illustration process. And then on the final piece side, you can see how simple it is. Um, it was a picture, and then a handwritten piece. Now, his happens to be two pages, so the written part flips up, and there's more on the, on the second page. Um, so that's just, this was an example from our launch, and he's one of my, you know, um, you know, top students. He's, he's definitely engaged in writing, he is good at it, um, able to come up with a lot of sentences. Now, if you go to the next slide, this is one of my E and L students. And um, she did not speak English until, I want to say, February of her kindergarten school year. So this is the very beginning of the year in first grade, um, I want to say September, October, and this is what she came up with. Um, I was going to leave the words off the bottom and see if you could figure out what she said, but um, Matt put the, Matt put the writing in there. Um, so my family went to the beach, I played in the sand and water, I went fishing, I got a fish. And you know, and a lot of first grade writing, we're really working on just sentence structure, trying to stretch out a full, complete sentence with all the right parts, as well as spelling, um, stretching out their words. So those are just two examples of our beginning of the year.
Okay, um, I'll just quickly read this here. These are um, two little snippets from pieces that uh, students had written in our classroom. One of them, unfortunately, is about um, the girl who had put her dog to rest on her mother's birthday. Uh, I couldn't bear to watch him squirm and clench his teeth as his tongue flopped to the side of his mouth. My head hung low as I walked over to my uncle and gave him a hug. He held me tight and whispered, don't look. Uh, the next one comes from Anthony, who, we talked about a theme about uh, the idea of courage. And Anthony had talked repeatedly about anxiety and nervousness, and just not having success in sports, especially baseball that he loved. So, um, he started off in his story and brought up, um, brought up a scene in which he just really struggled. And now he goes up and says, uh, later in his story, he says, my heart was beating so fast, I could see the ball drop from my head to my waist. So I took a step back with my toes pinning against the cold, soft turf. Then I loaded up and swung, crack. I hit a hard speedy line drive in between left and center field. I couldn't believe I hit the ball. I threw my bat in the ground and started to get my feet moving as fast as I could toward first base. Way to go, my dad cheered.
So here you're going to see Lee on the left, and she's going to be doing a share, um, where she's showing us how she develops a strong lead to hook her readers and watch, continue reading. And on the right is Nicholas, and he uh, wrote a story with perspective. And so here the children uh, sat and they read aloud their, uh, the pieces that they wanted to share to the rest of the class.
On this particular day, Ruby woke up with a surprise startle. Ruby thought it, that it came from her dream. She tumbled out of bed and landed downstairs for breakfast.
I fell asleep. Ah, I was falling from the sky, stunned. Ow, when I got up, I was on the beach. Double out, a crab pinched me. Hey, stop, I said. No, what? Crabs can talk? Well, some can. What's your name? Chatterclaws. My name is Drontsma, I replied.
And he also has a lot of dialogue, which is another uh, craft that I think we talked about in class, puts all of that together, and inspires kids to, you know, want to share. So they always usually try the craft that you're teaching.
Okay, we'll just finish up here with um, our student in the go. Uh, unfortunately, her grandma had gotten into a car accident, and there was an issue about taking care of her dog, and she was very emotional about it. And she talks about the time that she gets down to Puerto Rico and sees grandma, and we'll hear about seeing her dog also.
We parked at our condo. My sister and brother swung the car door open and jumped out of the car, but I took my time. Finally, I gently opened the car door and stepped out. It was like my feet were glued to the ground, my shoulders tripped as my head tilted down. I put my hand on my heart and felt it pounding. My breath was as heavy, my, my breath was heavy, and a trickle of sweat went down my face onto my teal shirt. The stairs felt like, felt like mountains, and as I opened the door, it started, started getting heavier and heavier. Then I slid little white paws in a light pink blouse. I kneeled down and touched his soft roof. I gave a big sigh as my heart started to slow down and my legs stopped tending. I could, I could feel his hot breath on my face. His wet slobber went all over me. I picked him up and took him to the car. He, he sat on my lap, and my brother, sister, and I pet his corpse fur. We were together again.
Yeah, and I, I know it's difficult to hear that, but again, where we're focusing was our, um, students really zooming in on the moment and not having time travel too quickly. A lot of times, writers like to go here, then this, and that, and we can't really linger in what's happening in the scene. So really trying to stress the powers of observation where you are at the time, and really bring your reader into that moment, so we can really evoke a powerfulness of, of the moment. So kids did a nice, cool job with that.
That was, that was excellent.
Now, we're going to move on to the grade six through twelve writing process. I'm Brittany Carrier, I'm the Pearson Middle High School principal. Here, um, Mr. Malone at the elementary school, they lay the foundations of writing. And then at the middle school, we're bridging the gap between um, more independent writing, and then also the more of the editing process. As we know, as great writers, you keep editing and you're still never satisfied with your piece always. So I have Ms. Mast, who's going to talk about middle school, and Mr. Frey's going to come up and talk about the high school, and then Mr. Diane will talk about what our end product goal is, right? For those international baccalaureate learners of what writing process. Last week, as a faculty, as a whole staff, because it's not just in English classes here that we are doing writing, our whole staff, every course went over the different types of writing that they do throughout the year and what is expected of their children. So like, if you walk into one of our social studies classes, they are working on document-based questions and analyzing it, and then having to write it. If you're going into a science classroom, they might be writing their conclusion on what they found through a lab. And then if you walk into an art class, they might be critiquing each other's pieces and then having to write about it. So it's happening all the time in different places. Our ELA and English teachers lay the groundwork, but at the same time, all of our teachers have to be well-versed in writing in order to provide a great interdisciplinary, interdisciplinary approach to us. So I'm going to welcome Ms. Mast, um, to talk about our middle school process.
Hello, everyone, I'm Jessica Mast, and I'm very excited to be here to talk a little bit about the seventh grade, as well as the middle school curriculum. Um, the Writing Workshop can be broken down into four primary components, and one of the first, as you can see here, is creating rigorous and high interest student prompts. So in order to do this, we really like to look at the standards. Uh, in order to create these prompts that align with the standards, we also like to provide students with opportunities uh, to select their own potential writing pieces that might inspire them. to select their own potential writing pieces that might inspire them. So in order to do this effectively, we like to really create multiple prompts that really set with the task at hand and align with the rubric. In addition to that, we use exemplars to model best practices. In order to really analyze an exemplar piece effectively, it is very important to work closely with a rubric. So in order for students to really look at that exemplar piece, they would work together as teams and in partnerships to really rate the effectiveness in terms of how those exemplars meet the level of the rubric. So this is a really important tool, which was also referenced at the elementary level where students have the opportunity to look at these model texts and then really create them themselves. So they might do this using graphic organizers or even using strategies like steal a line of text. These really provide opportunities for students to encourage one another and to create really meaningful texts. So the next component would center around conferencing, which we saw some beautiful conferencing going on. This continues on through the middle school level with students as well. So students conference with one another through the peer review process. This is a really important process where once again, students get to read each other's work and provide feedback for one another. In addition to that, this time is very important for teacher-student conference as well. So when I might sit and talk with a student, we may look explicitly at a few items that they're going to be working on. But it's also really important to acknowledge those areas of achievement and those areas that students are doing really well with. And finally, we really want to work towards developing a sense of writer's grace. This is ultimately what we want for all students. We want students to see themselves and envision themselves as writers. So in order to do this, we like to expose students to a multitude of genres and really provide students with opportunity for not only formal but informal writing opportunities as well. So this is kind of like our springboard page here. We have multiple opportunities where we can take a look at some student writing in action. If you could please just click on the bottom part there, it linked a pre-planned outline checklist. I think this is a good place to start. Thank you. So this is an opportunity for students to think through their writing and to work through the process. So if I was working with a student that maybe needed a little bit of extra support in terms of the scaffold, I would provide the student with this type of an outline in addition to sentence starters and transitionary words and phrases. This offers students something to grab on to so that they're able to release their teeth into the writing piece, particularly if they're experiencing some type of writer's block. This is a nice way for students to really have the opportunity to sit and think about their writing and create. In addition, you'll notice at the top, there's a writer's checklist. These checklists are so useful and helpful for our students so that they can really itemize those areas that may be in need of improvement while also acknowledging those areas that they've tackled and done very well with. So this is a sample piece that a student worked on. And in structuring this particular outline, the student was able to then self-assess and go through using that self-checklist and make sure that they met all the criteria and areas in need. In addition to that, we can click on the argumentative task and rubric. So here, if you scroll down to the bottom of the rubric, you will note that students have the opportunity to reflect as well. This reflection process is a very important step in the writing process. In addition to providing actionable feedback for students. So what I mean by actionable feedback is not just great job, well done, but looking specifically at those areas of strength that students have done very well and also itemizing those areas where students may need to make a little bit more of improvement. So this type of an actionable rubric really forms the basis for how I might conference with a student. So as we sit and talk specifically, we can also formulate next steps and writer's goals that will help them to achieve that next step for their writing. So just to look at a writing piece of student work, we have a multitude of examples here, but we can focus on the argumentative writing student work, please. So here you will note that we work specifically on crafting a compelling lead. And we like to use the language of the rubric in the classroom by using words like compelling. It allows students to really understand the level and rating degree of what the expectation is for the assignment. In addition to that, you can note that during the process of writing an argumentative piece, students need to formulate a cohesive thesis. And this thesis should also represent the reasons that support their claim. This particular argumentative essay provided students the opportunity to work with multiple sources. So not only did they read a primary text, but they also used articles to integrate into their writing. So they had to really think critically about that in order to select the most relevant pieces of evidence to best support their claim or their thesis. So this particular piece is rather long, so we will not read the whole thing. But as you can see, the student really did quite a job in terms of preparing, planning. We worked through every stage of the peer review process as well as conferencing. And the student also integrated multiple pieces of relevant evidence, which they were able to itemize and select the most important to support their claim. In addition to that, you will note that by the third paragraph here, we integrated and incorporated the counterclaim and then students formulated a rebuttal. So this is an example of really extending student thinking from maybe writing an argumentative letter to then expanding upon that to formulating an argumentative essay. So you'll also note that in the conclusion, we work with multitude of different styles of writing conclusions. And we do that through examining exemplars, but also students learn from each other in the classroom and they work together to try out and give it a go. And they try out multiple opportunities for conclusions as well. So at this point, we can just scroll to the next slide. This is an example of informal writing opportunities. So we just looked at an example of a formal writing opportunity, which was the argumentative writing. This would be an example of students' opportunity to really respond to the literature at hand. This could potentially form a later writing opportunity for students when they're thinking about formulating seed ideas. So students really love this particular part of the writing process because it's kind of unscripted. And often it can be in the form of a free write, a do-now response, or a reader's response such as the writing goals and celebrations are really important when we talk about the writing process. And providing students with that reflection time after they've written a piece is also highly important. Students sit and reflect and then share some of their highlight moments, which we call our hits and highlights. And they find that as they listen to one another, they learn from each other as well. And that allows us to also have students formulate those goals, those writing goals. And at this point, I'm gonna pass it off to Mr. Breech, who's gonna talk a little bit more about the high school level writing.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I am Charlie Frazier and I currently teach tenth grade. At the high school level, we are building on all the fabulous work you've heard from here today. The really, the big goal is just facilitating the independence. So we take many of the things that are happening in the middle school and they are still present in the first semesters of freshman and sophomore year. And then gradually throughout the year, they start to pull back. Informal writing takes place in much the same way. Quick writes, do-nows, annotations become much more prevalent as we want students to take their own information and start building their own arguments. The use of rubrics starts to move towards things like the rubrics for the regents or the IV rubrics if they're in the IV program. Scoring of exemplar writing really empowers students to make specific goals about what they want to achieve. And then more frequent long-form writing comes in in eleventh and twelfth grade as the essay becomes the most dominant writing project or short stories. So the purposes for writing are outlined by the state standards and they're much the same throughout ninth through twelfth grade. There's writing for analysis, there's argument, and then there is creativity. I've included our writing overview on the bullet points on the bottom here. One would just be for the English department and another would be a document that features all the other departments. So it's the same set of standards that each grade level approaches with more complexity, with more length to the assignments, with more independence on the part of the students. At each level, people are writing argumentative essays. At each level, people are writing research papers. At each level, people are writing creative poems and stories. The, if you want to go to the other slide that has everyone, you can see that writing is happening all over the curriculum. And if you want to just go to the pages on the bottom, each page is full of writing assignments that are connected to similar standards, specifically around the use of evidence and the selection of evidence, the ability to go out and find evidence that supports their arguments. I'm gonna head back to the slide. So the demonstration of independence on a process from start to finish is more focused, is more of the focus of the high school. Where in the earlier grades, you may be learning, you may be learning to write. As you get into later grades, you're writing to learn. So the project is assigned at the start of a unit and you are collecting information as the unit goes on in order to organize those ideas and get the most out of it. Using relevant evidence from text to support your ideas is driven home in every grade level. Locating the reliable sources of information and then utilizing those formats that they'll be expected to use in the next level of their education. And I'll pass it over to Mr. Gunn.
So some recurring themes in the K to twelve continuum. I think Mr. Frazier synthesized that well, is we go from learning to write to writing to learn across all subject areas. In the IV courses, which are the most challenging courses we offer here at Pearson, the goal is to prepare students for the demands of college and career writing. And specifically, that means to help them develop and refine their writing to form an argument that is supported by cogent expression of relevant and rigorous analysis across all subject areas. Those recurring themes are writing as a craft, right? So revision, revision, practice, practice. The more opportunities they have, the better. The push to go from a more structured support of the writing process to helping students learn their own process and work with them through feedback loops. Next, please. So I think that the screwing in of a light bulb is a good metaphor to illustrate what we're after, especially in the higher grades and in the IV classes. Feedback from teachers and feedback from their peers is what helps them see their writing from different perspectives, which is really the mechanism that helps them to improve it. Adolescents are often caught up in their own head, especially as they're learning more vocabulary and they're writing for themselves. And as we screw and screw the light bulb through those feedback loops, we hope to get to the aha of writing is all about the audience. To the extent that the argument is comprehensible to the audience, to the reader, is the extent to which the child or the student has been successful. Oftentimes adolescents try and sound fancy. It's very pleasing, especially as they're really developing in the eleventh and twelfth grades. And fancy is often the enemy of clarity. Sophistication of structure and language are necessary only to the extent that they serve the argument. And that's, that's what we try and get after and help them to realize. So in the IV classes, there are internal formal writing assignments. All of the IV classes have a project, which we call an IA, that stands for an internal assessment. It's an internal assessment because the teacher is great at using an IV rubric. And then IV asks for a sampling to moderate, to make sure that we're grading to their standard. And then there's the external assessments, excuse me, that we send out to be graded by IV examiners. So for the last couple of weeks, I've been uploading those for our current seniors. Those are the essay that they do in their literature course. We don't grade that in-house. That's done by an external examiner. In addition, the theory of knowledge essay and the extended essay. The theory of knowledge essay, which Mr. Frazier teaches, theory of knowledge as well as second grade English, is probably the best preparation for college writing, in my opinion. It really helps a student to pare down their argument. It really forces that discipline on them, which again is what we're after, the clarity of communication and comprehensibility for the audience. The extended essay is a fifteen-page term paper that they write on a subject of their choosing, which introduces them to the rigors of research supporting with evidence. But the essence of that argumentative writing is best taught through that TOK essay. Just for fun, we'll have a sampling. TOK provides, next slide, please. Titles that students may choose from to write their essay. So this is some of the stuff that our students are responding to as a writing prompt. Is replicability necessary in the production of knowledge discussed with reference to two areas of knowledge? And to what extent is the knowledge we produce determined by the methodologies we use discussed with reference to history and one other area of knowledge? These were the two most popular, I think, this year, right? They're good writing prompts. Definitely challenge the children to make a clear cogent argument, to consider the counterargument as they advance their claim. And then in the extended essay, next slide, please. These are some of their titles. This illustrates how the students are producing work across all of the subject areas. So does Rust have the capacity to improve other program languages? That's a computer science extended essay. Paradoxes in Sophocles' Antigone. The dilemma of Nazi human experimentation results as medical knowledge. Analysis of the radius of a wind turbine and power output, a physics essay. And parental pressure and childhood expectations explored in the screenplay of The Royal Tenenbaums. So this is some of the stuff the current seniors did this year. It's very impressive writing, which speaks to the strength of the K to twelve continuum that all of the teachers detailed so nicely. Thank you.
That does it. If you guys have any questions.
No, it's fantastic. Thank you very much for presenting that to us. I was just taking some notes about, you know, about the the great job you all do in meeting the child where they are or the adolescent and bringing them up speed, giving them confidence and the ability to project their thoughts and emotions in paper and then to the audience. So, thank you.
It's excellent. Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you very much.
So the next topic. Yeah, yeah. So the next topic is really talking about cell phones and I'll just briefly introduce it. When I was high school and middle school principal, maybe, I don't know, four or five years ago, we, at that time, sort of emphasized that the technology was here to stay and that maybe we should place our emphasis on teaching students to navigate this new world thoughtfully. And over the last three or four years, despite our best efforts to do that, it appears as though cell phones and related technologies have become an issue in our school to the extent that they're interfering with students' focus in the classroom. So we've decided to restart that discussion to think about perhaps reexamining how we approach it. And to that end, Ms. Carriero and a board member, Jordana Sobi, have had multiple discussions about this topic. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Carriero to briefly introduce it.
So through our shared decision-making committee process, which we are grateful that we're able to have at this school, our high school shared decision-making committee has really come in concerned about the use of cell phones. Since the pandemic, our qualitative parental student and teacher data has demonstrated the amount of addiction is a stronger, but the amount of addiction, but also the amount of use that our children are needing to be on their cell phones all the time. And it's now interrupting sometimes our education process here. So we have been deciding to reexamine the cellphone policy through the shared decision-making committee. It is also seen that there's two different policies within the middle high school. So in the middle school, students are, once that first bell rings at seven fifty, that they are to put their phones away. They can be on them, but they're away. They are not allowed to have it. While that is great, it doesn't mean that our kids aren't savvy and they're manipulative as all middle school children are, if you remembered. So when you were a middle schooler, they go to the bathroom and they So, when you were a middle schooler, they go to the bathroom and they text their parents or they're, they're on Snapchat. So, we understand the process of that. And then, at the end of the day, once that bell rings after academic support, they are able to use their cellphone. It's, uh, it's been a great process. We, since the implementation, we've seen a lot more engagement in the classroom, more or less reliability on that cell phone. So, we feel like middle school policy right now is great. There's still some kinks to work out, obviously, with the bathrooms and the hiding of the phones and the locker rooms as well. But that's normal. You know, children, they have to get around it, just like as adults, if we sit somewhere, we try to get around the rules sometimes as well. In the high school, though, it is up to them to be their check-in point with how they use their cellphone and how much they can use it. So, if a teacher asks to put it away, they have to put it away. If they ask to give it up, give it over if they're using it too much after being asked to put it away, we're able to take it. However, we've seen an increase with pushback, sorry, from students as well as a lack of attention in the classroom because of how attached they are to their cell phones. And remember, these children grew up in a pandemic where during that lockdown period, that was their way of communicating with their peers when they were home. FaceTime, Snapchat, Instagram, TikTok, I was gonna call it Tiki Talk, could just embarrass the children, but I won't do that now. So, those are important things of how they communicate. However, the in-person and, and communication and how we interact and speak with each other in real time and real life is a very big skill that they're all going to need in the real world. So, it's now, maybe we have to scale back. So, Ms. Solve and I, um, met with the representative Andrew Richards, who's right here, who's going to present from Yonder. And Yonder started out as a company that was used in the, like, art spaces or for, like, parties, for celebrity parties where people, when they went to the party or the event, had to put their cellphone and put it in a pouch that could only be opened by a special, um, unlocking device. It's almost kind of similar to, we remember the old school plastic tags that we got when we went to, I'm gonna bring it back to Sweetsies, but Sue Macy's or Sweetsies when you bought a piece of clothing. So, it limits the wanting to get it, get to their cellphone and taking a picture or posting about it or Snapchatting it. So, then Yonder realized through us, um, a teacher or an adminis- school administrator was like, hey, this should be in school. So, Andrew is going to go over how it's implemented in school. Um, and I'm very thankful that he came out from the city to do that and we had a very good meeting about it. It's in a bunch of schools. I came from the New York City Department of Education space and a couple of our sister schools, I would say, like Clinton Middle School, which is similar to where Rehav has it, as well as Wagner. So, there's a bunch of schools that are similar to the style and progressive collaborative education that we have here that have implemented in their space as well. So, Andrew, sorry.
Thanks so much. Uh, thank you all for having me here today. Um, so, really, I, I did a little bit of digging on some of your guys' goals for the, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And two of the things I noted were, uh, inclusive educational practices as well as security and infrastructure. So, today, I'd really like to identify how Yonder is going to address both of those things, uh, here at your school. So, as Principal, uh, Carriero mentioned, we started in the entertainment industry. So, doing concerts, um, doing, uh, comedies, weddings, listening parties, you name it. Um, you know, most recently, we actually just did Fenway Park, uh, with Bill Burr, of, uh, over twenty thousand people, all at a phone-free, uh, a, a phone-free event. So, that's, you know, pretty impressive to think about humans being able to focus their attention for that period of time at such a great scale. So, at one of these, uh, one of these events in New York, a principal, and this was about five years ago, a principal approached us and said, hey, can you do this in our school? Our students are struggling to engage with one another. They're struggling to engage with, uh, you know, their, their peers and their teachers, much in the same way we as concertgoers are struggling to engage with, you know, Joe Rogan, uh, Bill Burr, Dave Chappelle. Um, and so, uh, we said, sure, let's go for it. Uh, so, since that point, about five years ago, we have grown and we're in over a thousand schools worldwide. The next one, please. Um, these are some of our schools in the United States. And then, on the next slide, um, in New York City, uh, right? Uh, so, a few of the schools that, um, Principal Carriero mentioned, uh, this is down at the bottom, but in two hundred and thirty-eight Department of Education schools. Um, so, uh, you know, we've been very busy, hard at work, but I can say that all of the policy and procedural side of things that I'm gonna discuss next, um, all came from educational leaders and educators themselves. We've listened to, uh, what worked, what did not work, and so, our best practices are derived directly from that. Um, so, the purpose of Yonder, right? Uh, we're creating that phone-free distraction space. It is a tier-one intervention. So, for those of you that are familiar with that term, it means it's to be utilized by all students, uh, to create the normative learning environment. Um, so, for all students. So, the, the program includes, uh, implementation planning, right, community outreach, product, the implementation itself, and then post-implementation support. So, the way we facilitate this tier-one intervention is by, um, one-to-one individual assignment. So, at the beginning of the program, every student is assigned their own pouch. Uh, they write their first and last name on the pouch. Uh, they do this for two reasons. The first and more obvious reason, if you drop it on the floor, you know who to give it back to. Uh, but really, the most important reason is accountability, right? As we're talking to those, uh, middle school, uh, and high school normative behaviors, um, we find about ten percent of students are going to try to push back against this. So, uh, you know, in a, in a variety of ways, um, some include, uh, tam- tampering with the pouch, right? And so, by having the name on it, it's, it holds everybody accountable. Um, so, you go to the next slide. So, the process begins at, in the morning at the beginning of the day. So, I can use you, uh, as a student comes in, right? They have their pouch, they take that out of their backpack, good morning, how are you? They press it, it opens up like that. Take your phone, put it inside. Students keep this pouch with them the entirety of the day. So, they put it in their pocket, off we go to class, learn about writing. Uh, we come back out at the end of the day dismissal. I say, alright, thank you so much, have a great day. And off I go. So, what that does is it takes the liability, you know, off of collecting phones at school. It also takes the logistical burden off, um, you know, your intake staff of having to do that. And most importantly, right, we're talking about being able to sustain long periods with having our phones next to us and not, uh, you know, utilizing them. So, you know, I think this is a proverbial desk drawer, right, when we have to get something done. You know, whether that, you know, is our taxes or writing a song or doing whatever it is. Uh, we turn our phones off, we put them on in a desk drawer. We accomplish the task that we need to, and then we return, you know, to check our, our emails or messages, whatever. Um, and so, what, what this allows by having students keep their pouch on them, what this allows them to do is build that stamina, right? They're gonna come to school and they're gonna have their phone next to them for seven, eight hours a day. And so, what we have really found is that is not only successful in the school, but all those habits that they learned will also carry over into the home life as well. So, um, that, that's just, um, our, that's why our ethos is, uh, tier-one intervention for all students because that they are, they're then able to engage with one another. Um, so, we talked a little bit about what the program includes, but go to the next slide, please. So, this is a survey that we did of nine hundred school partners. Uh, sixty-five percent saw improvement in academic performance, seventy-four percent an improvement in student behavior and eighty-three percent, um, in student engagement in the classroom. Uh, so, I also have a few frequently asked questions that I just wanted to address right away, and then I'm happy to answer any question back there. So, uh, in the event of an emergency, right, what happens if there's an emergency at school? Well, what we know is that we want students to follow the safety procedures that your, uh, you know, safety experts have put in place. Fire drill, lockdown, those types of situations. We want students to be, um, you know, uh, situationally aware and also listening to first responder directions. Once the area is safe, students are then able to open their pouches to call home and, uh, you know, let the buggones know they're okay. Do other magnets work with Yonder phones? Um, so, this is a, this is an interesting one. Uh, so, I can see this again. This is actually, uh, this is, uh, multiple magnets geometrically configured inside of here, right? That's basis of, of, of the patent. So, um, in the, uh, uh, in my entire time at Yonder, I've only seen twice, uh, students be able to engineer that themselves. And so, hats off to them for their engineering prowess, you know? Uh, we want them to use that, use that energy, um, we use it for good. And so, I, I will say, though, while they, you know, were, were quite genius, uh, they still, uh, you know, lacked the discretion that most middle schools, m- middle schoolers and high schoolers do. So, um, they were caught within an hour and, um, they were, you know, uh, we had a policy to, to address that. And then, smartwatches and headphones, right? Uh, these pouches, they will hold your smartwatch, they will hold your AirPods, and they will hold your Apple Watches. So, all wearable tech. And the reason that this is so very important is a lot of the social, emotional learning that happens, it doesn't just happen during algebra class while you're learning algebra. It happens in the hallway when you're passing one another. And even if you have one AirPod, if you're detracting from your ability to engage with, you know, another human being face-to-face and giving them your full attention. So, for that reason, we really, uh, recommend that all wearable tech is inside. So, uh, this, this sort of faces, um, more of the policy side of things. So, uh, these best practices, you know, if you see a student on their phone outside of the pouch, well, the best practice and most natural consequence is call home, talk to mom and dad, talk about a plan to support that student, right? Engaging, um, with everybody in the tier-one intervention. So, parent, we call it parent pickup, right? Parent comes to school, you're at the parent conference and say, look, this is a policy, this is a, a norm that we are in, an endeavor we are going um, a- as a whole. So, um, we're gonna ask that your student replies. In the event that a student damages the pouch, you know, we see this occasionally, right? Um, whether it's just anxiety nerves or someone seriously trying to cut into it. And so, the same thing, um, in the event that it's damaged, uh, apparent, parent contact. Um, so, part of what's included in the program is we actually don't charge you per pouch. These are included in the annual program. So, um, when a student damages a pouch, you will have extra ones on hand to give to the student after that parent conference, right? It's so important to isolate the conversation with the student and the parent, um, a- as, you know, that's really in- important in, in, in not only, uh, having that conversation, but hearing out the student's side as well. You know, why did you damage the patch? Well, I felt anxious, I felt nervous. That's a very legitimate reason, right? So, we wanna hear their side as well. Um, and then, if a student forgets their pouch, this one's really very simple. Um, simply, we're gonna collect it at the door, uh, the, the school staff will collect it at the door and give it back to them at the end of the day. Um, right? So, that way, they're, they're accountable with the reminder of, hey, just bring your pouch tomorrow and you'll be able to bring your phone to school. So, uh, in addition to those, uh, the policy and the procedure side, we also have student art program and work program that all students, um, that are in our, uh, in our schools are eligible, uh, to do so. At the high school level, you have to be eighteen years or older. We're working on getting, um, that, uh, age limit, um, dropped, uh, a little bit. But, uh, essentially, you are able and eligible to come work at a Yonder show, right? And this is a really great opportunity for students to see phone-free spaces, engage in them, uh, outside of just the academic. Um, so, what are the next steps? Um, e- essentially, what I'll do is, uh, provide, uh, an estimate. And once, uh, PO is, um, uh, processed, we can begin the implementation planning process. Um, we begin a district-wide communication plan. This is really step one of that, so thank you all for being here. Uh, and then, um, step forward would be go live for the fall term. So, um, I would love to answer any questions, uh, there are any that jump, jump right out. Yes. Oh, sorry. Board first. Any board member questions?
Uh, really, just for us, I think, I think it's a very interesting product. Uh, the only question for us is if the phone is, when it's placed in the pouch, is it put on, obviously, we need to put it on silent or off, right? It's off, obviously, in the pouch. If it starts going off, it's gonna distract everybody from.
I, uh, ideally, our messaging is just at the door, right? Please have your phone powered off before you get to the door. The first few days, you know, we're building new habits, so students, they get to the door, they forget to turn it off, goes inside, right? Um, but after that, it's really quite seamless. They come to the door, mom and they did school, powered off, and in they go.
How long have you typically found the learning curve to be? Yeah. Implementing to scores generally?
Um, it, it really depends. Um, I think, safe to say, I mean, I've seen, you know, the, the first signs of that neuroplasticity, if you will, in, on the first day. Um, and where I really see this is in the lunchrooms. When I go into many lunchrooms, um, it's eerily quiet, um, at first. Um, you know, those are sort of the places traditionally we think of as boisterous, right? But, uh, when you go in, you know, every student's on their phone, it's silent, they're not engaging with their peers. Many times, they're not actually even eating, you know, food that's provided. Um, and then, after that first morning, when everyone's couched in, that first lunch period, the noise level rises when you get those age-appropriate sort of, um, you know, guys, let's bring the energy down. So, that's, you know, within hours. Um, and then, really, the, the longer-term, uh, uh, effects, both academic and behavioral, um, definitely within a, a few weeks to a month, and then after a full year, uh, it's really quite significant. Right?
There were two questions that I asked you last week that I feel like to answer them here, if people will come up with the same questions. One is, you know, if you're taking art class, you need a phone for stop-motion animation, just kind of what happens in that situation? And then, uh, I was gonna say that one, I lost the other one, so I ended that one and then I'll think about it.
Sure. Um, yeah, so what do you, what do we do if a, a class is using a cellphone or students' cellphones for academics? Um, so, one of these will always be in the main office, but then, one of the things we also do is, uh, assign an, an extra one, um, that can kind of roam around. So, if a teacher has a lesson plan that is specific to utilizing your cellphone, um, they can say, hey, I need to sign one of these out um, for a very specific class, very specific curriculum, um, at which point, uh, this, the teacher will be responsible for students repouching the student's phone before they go back into the classroom or into the sort of, um, general atmosphere. And then, the teacher would be responsible for bringing this back, uh, immediately to the main office. So, it really centralizes on this, uh, this process. And I, I guess to that point as well, this system is designed to take the class, the classic conflict cycle out of the classroom. Right? So, instead of a teacher having to, you know, e- engage with a student negatively, um, and, and vice versa, and also take away from important academic time, um, we're simply removing that from the classroom. And, and, um, by, if a phone is seen in the classroom, a support staff from the administration would come, isolate the conversation with the student, and no class time is lost and no, you know, uh, relationship is, is harmed.
And the other one was just the situation where, like, if a kid, kid needs to call home to change their dismissal plan or a parent needs to reach their kid, you know, right now, there's usually, you know, I might text my kid hoping they'll see it at two fifty at dismissal time, um. Sometimes they, unfortunately, they beforehand are real, and I'm now part of the problem as a parent. So, can, what, what's your solution to that situation?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, so much of the, uh, so much of the texting that I do hear of from teachers and, and students for that matter are, it's, it's my parents, my mom, it's my dad. They're letting me know, you know, that I have this or this after school. And, um, you know, while that is super important, it's also detracting from not only that individual student, but also, you know, if the distraction is larger than that, the entire class's ability to learn. Um, but in the event of needing those specific details, um, number one, again, all, one of these will always be in the main office, so student can simply go down to the main office, check their phone, right? Or if a parent needs to call the school, they can always use the landline, which I imagine still works. Yes. Oh, good. Good, good. I love the, love to hear that. Um, so, you can always get in touch, uh, the old-fashioned way, and they will, uh, the main office will call to the classroom and let your son or daughter know that it's, uh, wh- what your plans are for, for after-school.
How many decoy phones do you see?
Decoy phones, quite a few. The more, more interesting one is the sticks of deodorant. So, and you, and we, yeah, you come in and, and for that reason, uh, it's so important that there is an adult, right? Monitoring this process in the morning, so that way, they're really ensuring, okay, you know, what's going in, in here is the phone, not in fact stick of deodorant. And in the event that they do put a decoy phone in there, it really solves itself, you know, within, uh, an hour or so because, um, students, uh, are really, uh, it's very com- compulsive being on their phones. What ends up happening is that, that body language, right? If ninety percent of the class is, you know, using this effectively and you have that body language in the back, it's much easier to address that, that one student and really support them through, um, you know, living in, in a, it's phone-free environment. Yes, I'm sorry. We saw one question, we'll take one.
I had this happen at a concert, and I admit that I got my iWatch out, so I just think we should know.
Yeah, so.
I should have made my iWatch out.
Nice. When, when, how long ago is it?
Um, it was at the Amy Schiffer concert, I thought, in the summer. Um, it was at the Amy Schiffer concert, I thought, oh, in the summer.
The summer?
I found the iWatch that I could still be contacting because I was on call and, and I managed to get it out because I was a student, I didn't get in trouble. But otherwise, I'm in for this. Thank that too.
So. Part, part of, thank you, thank you. Um, part of uh, you know, what the, the, the reason that this is an annual program and that there is an annual cost is um, you know, doing product upgrades and replacements. So actually, since the time you've been to that concert, we have uh, I, I addressed that problem. And if you have, if you have an Apple Watch on you now, you can definitely demonstrate.
Okay.
Maybe if you want to. Yes, okay.
All right. Well, thanks.
Great, great. Thank you. All right, thanks. Thank you. Yes.
I've studied the effect on like, you said, during all school hours. So does it increase or decrease? I mean.
Um, I can say that we have not done any studies on that. However, anecdotally speaking, every parent I talk to says, can we get one of these in our house? So uh, I, I can't say, you know, from a, a peer-reviewed standpoint, but definitely anecdotally speaking. Um, and what we also find, and this goes, you know, this speaks to, um, you know, the, the tremendous amount of work that um, you guys are doing on the curriculum side of things as well, our habits that we learn at school, they always carry over at home, right? And so it's, it's really, it would make sense that this would as well, so. Great. All right, great. We're gonna now have a Marsden update from Superintendent Nichols and we'll have public input number one.
Um, just before you go to that though, in terms of like next steps, like this is the next step, like to the extent that's something you wanna do? Is it going to just be a recommendation from you and it ends up on an agenda or is there gonna be further discussion or I just?
We can go around and find out the will of the board to.
Yeah, that's what I. I mean, I, I'm all for what, you know, this sounds great. This is one option of, of many different ways to handle cell phones in schools. We tried one in two thousand eighteen, it didn't really work very well. So I am for going to the next step. Um, but I also feel strongly that this should come from our administrators and superintendent. So to the extent this is something that they have looked, they know now that, that he made his presentation, you guys wanna move forward, if that's your recommendation, then I would just, you know, move forward with it.
Yeah, what I'd like to do, I think the measured way to go about it is to talk uh to Ms. Carriero, Mr. Malone, the administrative cabinet, and to come back to you at the next board meeting um with our thoughts. But certainly, uh, there seems to be some significant merit to the idea.
I would support it. It's a great idea, that recommendation of administration.
Yeah, no, it, it looks great. And we'll get obviously a cost proposal on.
Right.
The next, whenever we next look at it.
But yeah, it seems like it means the methods same. So whatever, you know, it's gonna be effective for the district. Um, be supportive of it. Seemed like a good, good tool. I'm sure there's others out there also, but. Sandy? You're muted.
I think it's, um. Oh, you've got two phones on, there's an echo.
You're, you're muted, Sandy. Well, we'll come back to you, Sandy.
You wanna come back to her?
Yeah, we'll come back to it. Okay, we're gonna move on while Sandy's working that out to uh Superintendent update on Marsden and then we'll public number one.
Yeah, just a, a very great update that um, for those of you who are following, um, you were in communication with Southampton Town um over a number of months. And at the last hearing, um, after that hearing concluded, um, the board discussed um the notion of moving forward uh on our own uh with the referendum without the town, and that would be simply for the acquisition of the property. We would no longer be um involved in extensive talks about plan modifications or that kind of stuff. So in my discussions with the board, it was simply for the acquisition of the property with no uh related plans. And related to that, we're at this point just consulting with our attorneys with regard to next steps to comply with what we need to, um, if we end up having to vote on uh May sixteenth. So that's the statement at this time.
Okay, great. Um, with that, I would open up public input number one. On, with respect to public info, number one, there are sheets. Mary, we had those out on the seats as to the rules for public input number one, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So those rules are applicable now to public input number one. Um, if anybody would like to speak for public input number one, that would be the time, come up to the podium and just please give your name only, not your address, and you'll have three minutes. Subject to the rules that were provided in my table. Give time, Mary?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
We just need your name first.
Allison Walker. Um, I'm here to make a few points in relation to the Marsden acquisition. For the benefit of the community, I urge all transparency in your decision-making and intentions. First of all, artificial turf. Can you please clarify your position on this? Now that you're pursuing the acquisition of the Marsden lots without community preservation fund involvement, their restrictions no longer apply. Can you please state whether you intend to pursue artificial turf or whether you will rule this out in line with the wishes of the broader community? For those still not aware, it is important to understand that artificial turf is highly toxic, which creates carcinogenic and endocrine disruption exposure for athletes who use it and the broader community in our drinking water. At a time when this surface is falling out of play with professional athletes due to documented health issues, I believe it would be a terrible idea for the school to burn our community with this for years to come. Secondly, costs. The November third vote authorized the school to use three point three million dollars in reserve funds for the acquisition. Now that the score is going alone, a six million dollar bond issued now needs to be approved by taxpayers at the May sixteenth vote. If approved, this will provide the nine million dollars needed to acquire the land. However, it must be emphasized that this is not the total funding needed for this project. It appears that a further three to four million dollars will be needed to develop the land into the field. It's also complicated, and there is significant risk of it costing more than that with extensive engineering work required to deal with flooding and potential toxic waste remediation. What is the school board's plan for this? I believe it is important that you declare this plan now. Will you return to voters for approval for a second bond issue at a later date to fund the development costs? Are you breaking this into smaller chunks to avoid a headline thirteen million dollar cost? Lastly, there is the opportunity cost. Thirteen million dollars is an extraordinary amount of money to spend on one athletic field. I believe it is important that the community fully understands what these funds, what else these funds could be spent on. This large amount of money could fund a multitude of other projects that would improve the lives and opportunities for the students. Has there been any discussion on this? Can the board please provide transparency on what else was considered and why the athletic field is determined to be the only priority? Examples of other projects, and this is certainly not an inclusive list, fixing the existing fields at Pearson and at the elementary school, improving the ventilation system, which I think I read had to be scaled back due to lack of funds, renovating the gym, improving the cafeteria, new fields of studies, marine biology and environmental studies, more advanced classes, even paying bus drivers more to help shuttle students to Massachusetts Park. In general, it feels like there is always a lack of funds for other projects, but for the Marsden Athletic Field, it seems that it's being pursued at any cost. It is most imperative that the community understands all the options for this that it can spend and has the opportunity to be heard. I urge the board to be transparent and allow the community to vote on multiple options for how thirteen million dollars or more in funds are spent for the benefit of our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm, this is she the paper.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, come up.
Hi, everybody. Michelle Leo here. Surprise, surprise. Um, first of all, I just wanna thank um all of the teachers who were here and presented tonight. That was such an extraordinarily stimulating presentation. I'm so excited for um education that's going on for my kids. Um, Mrs. Burkowski, I've known since grade school in these rooms, and then uh Ms. Coram was one of Texas' teacher. And can I have Milan for fifth grade for that? Thanks, Mr. Wong. Um, then ask for yonder. Don't tell all the parents. Um, tonight from Marsden, thank you, Board of Education, for um putting out this proposition. I am beyond excited. I want you to know that continues to inbound this acquisition effort, full stop. And I appreciate everything you're doing. So that's my input for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on.
Uh, Doug, can you be, um? At the meeting at the Southampton Town Board on February twenty eighth, uh, you agreed with the town, we're closing on the acquisition of the, the Marsden properties using C P F money. The cost of developing the properties will be secured by a bond approved by the district taxpayers. And really disappointed to hear that the plan now is to do this piecemeal to get the approval for the purchase. And this really comes back to my point, I think, last September, that we're not being presented with an overall plan in these little incremental bits, all of which will add up. The Southampton Town Supervisor expressed the concern that the Marsden properties would be purchased without a fully developed plan and without certainty that the taxpayers would authorize a bond for the whole cost of development. We, the district taxpayers, have the same concern. You told the town of Southampton that you would present the taxpayers with a bond request in May, including the estimated five point seven to six point seven million dollars to develop the properties. Since the C P F is no longer going to provide six million towards the purchase, that means that the bond now should be between eleven point seven and twelve point seven million. Of course, that also doesn't include replenishing the three point three million to be drawn from the Capital Reserve Fund. So the total, as I look at it, is fifteen to sixteen million. From perspective of fifteen million dollar bond over a fifteen-year uh period of four point five percent interest rate will cost the taxpayers one point four million dollars every year for fifteen years. That's more than a thousand dollars, sorry, more than fourteen hundred dollars per student per year compared with about two hundred dollars a year uh per student, which currently be spent, being spent for Mash Park. That one point four million a year does not include the cost of maintaining the new field and does not include the potential that developing the field will cost more than the current estimate. At the meeting on February twenty eighth, the school's engineers said that the stormwater management plan was put at a very preliminary stage of design. The two to three million cost estimates for stormwater management could be far too low. The engineers also said that based on the work it had completed at that time, they could not be certain that they could construct a playable field. Discussing the details of the plan.
Thirty seconds.
You, you described a water, water collection and irrigation system that could mean the field would be usable about four hundred hours a year. Setting aside whether those usage rates are achievable at Marsden, given the topography, what we're talking about here is a field that is usable perhaps ten hours a week during the school year and not at all outside that. If Marsden is developed, the school will still need Mash Park. The safety concerns regarding to Mash Park will not be addressed. The time to work for Mash Park will not be eliminated. Many existing fields behind the school and Mash Park will still need to be maintained and upgraded.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Levy. I feel very sad because I taught writing in the schools for years and I'd much rather be talking about writing across the curriculum, which is one of my favorite subjects, but I'm gonna talk about one of my least favorite subjects, Marsden instead. I wish that this board would consider slowing the process down. I think a lot of the acrimony, a lot of the questions, a lot of the questions that have been raised today could be answered by an environmental impact statement. I understand that the parents and the board and a lot of proponents of the project are worried that Tronzo will either develop McMansions there himself or sell the property to others and develop mansions. I do not want McMansions there. As anybody who's heard me testify at the A R B, I don't want McMansions there. Um, but let's face it, the Tronzo family has owned that property for decades. Nobody has tried to buy it, no one's tried to develop it. And I think the reason is because it would be so problematic to build anything there. Uh, a McMansion, an affordable house, a playing field, anything. And the fundamental questions about whether the project is even feasible, whether the costs of the project are going to be prohibitive, what kind of environmental impacts there will be, whether the stormwater drainage issue, which is so important, which I know the village is working on as well, has been worked out. These things have to be answered, and they need to be answered before the taxpayers of this school district vote for another six million, a total of nearly ten million dollars for acquisition of property that this school district may not be able to use for what it intends to use it for. And I, as an educator, sitting here tonight, listening to the educators talk about writing, particularly writing across the curriculum, I just thought, let's use the money to raise teachers' salaries, to buy property for affordable housing for teachers, for mentoring and tutoring programs that are so great for writing. There's so many things that this money could be used for. But I beg you to think about delaying this vote, having an E I S, which will answer a lot of questions, which will stop all the divisive arguments and, and give us some facts to talk about. So we can have a rational civil discussion and we can write an essay about it.
Thank, thank you. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Good evening, Anthony Bourbon Law. Uh, just to start off to say that, you know, uh, it's unusual for me and Catherine to agree on anything when it comes to developing development projects. But in this thing, I mean, I almost wanted to say exactly what she's said. So for us to be in agreement here, I think it shows you that there's some fundamental issues with this. And I think, you know, a lot of this, uh, a lot of this uh opposition is focused on artificial work to this natural turf and the cost and things like that. I think there are more fundamental issues than that. And I brought this up before. I mean, is this property you're acquiring, is it physically able to um be used for the uh stated uh purpose of a playing field and ancillary facilities and parking? I'm not really sure, uh, based on the information that I've had, uh, um, that that's the case. I mean, to put some of this into perspective, this is, I think, the four point four acres of land. Um, Watch Case Factory project, the biggest project in this uh village in decades, was a little bit, a little bit over two acres of land. Um, uh, you know, I know Watch Case Factory has buildings on it, but a lot of the um uh topographical and site issues are gonna be very similar here at Mars- Marsden Street. Um, you know, but paradoxically, as big as the property is, from the own, from the diagrams that this board has provided, you can see that that soccer field just barely fits on the, on the property. And, you know, I, I just, you know, and that's not even taking, that's just a two-dimensional en- uh issue, not taking care of, uh, not taking into consideration topographical challenges. Um, you know, I was walking by the property today on my way, way here. I, I don't think the topographical issues are unmanageable. I think, you know, you, you could potentially do something with that. But, I mean, it's gonna involve a, a, a lot of, a lot of planning, a lot of engineering, a lot of bulldozers, and frankly, a lot of money. And you've gotta let the uh voters and uh make sure the voters understand that. Um, you know, one thing uh this board keeps uh saying, at least I've seen it in the papers, is that a lot of people from um supervisor Schneiderman on downward have suggested other possible uses for the property. And you've always said, well, doesn't meet the school's um facility needs. Well, I mean, I mean, it's the only facility need for the school, a, a, a soccer field? I mean, you can't tell me that there's some other possibilities that you could, uh, things you could use this uh property for if the soccer field doesn't work. Uh, you know, three things can happen here. One is that, you know, your, your engineers and architects could work a miracle and make this all work and keep the neighbors happy. Uh, I'll try to wrap up quickly. Um, but, you know, another possibility is, is that you're just gonna have to shoehorn something in there and everybody's gonna be unhappy with the product. And um. And um, and um, you know, people who voted for funding this are going to be like, this isn't, we didn't realize we were voting for this. And, uh, you know, third possibility is you're just going to realize you can't do anything at all with the property. And then you're going to be like, uh, having to explain to the voters, well, we we can't give you your your athletic field here and we just bought this property. We don't have any, don't know what we, what to do with it. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Or return to online. Is there anybody else here that wants to speak? One.
My name is Sean Oppenheimer. And I agree with everything that's been said. This is not a statement. This is a question. What are you going to do with the field? What are your plans?
You heard the superintendent's statement. Our intent is to acquire the property and then go through that process with the with the town.
What's the process here?
Process is what we've been talking about all along. The intent right now is to acquire the property and that's all we're going to say right now.
Okay, is there going to be a community forum?
Yes.
To discuss?
One up.
Thank you, Jeff Segler. Uh, first, I want to thank this board for tirelessly working on this proposed project with the town over the past eleven plus months, as soon as the town is known. And also just want to say that um everybody I know, all of the community here that lives here year round, that sends their kids here, that wants to see the footprint of the school secured for the kids' futures and not just ours, but every kid that comes through Pearson in the future. Uh, those people voted on November third and a lot more of those people are going to vote again to acquire this land and to keep this land as a part of the school in the district it's already in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you're superior this. Uh, I was at the town board meeting. I just wanted to applaud everybody that came in in support of the project. I saw a lot of the board members there speaking about it and I was, you know, very supportive of that. Thank you. Uh, I think we've discussed enough over and over and a very lengthy process. The project, I think it's time to move on and proceed with the solution. Uh, if people pay attention, like I think in previous presentations, uh, the superintendent mentioned specifically that it's going to be a community forum, so how that property is going to be developed. So um I think this is a first step to move forward with this and just want to thank you and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in person?
Yes, uh, my name is Daniel Mursley and I didn't plan to speak and you're probably very tired of hearing people on both sides, but there's a couple of things tonight that I think just, I just can't resist mentioning. First, we hear about all this divisiveness and I've even gotten so many texts from people um who are encouraging me not to create divisiveness. Um, the parents that I know in this community uh are are, they they just are shocked to be even thought of, that we're accused of such a thing when we're focused on our children. The divisiveness that happens in this village right now is because, for some reason, folks don't understand why we can't be convinced of what they think to be right. Uh, I hear numbers being quoted that are, I mean, are are just like somebody's doing on the back of an envelope, typically a neighbor, and all of a sudden I'm hearing sixteen, seventeen million dollars. I've heard nothing from this Board of Education similar to that. I've heard straightforward talk that now is quite simple, that we should all understand. It's about acquiring the land for the future. We'll have probably in this village a hundred local forums on this because of the divisiveness and somehow we'll get to a good decision at the end of it, but we'll have no decision if we don't own the land. This was all about CPF, improper use of CPF funds. I've heard it so much from so many people. As soon as CPF's gone, now it's another issue and it's not a CPF improper use fund anymore. We talk about a, you know, a very well-known architect in town, known for historic preservation. This land is just inconceivable for to be used. It's largely flat. Go walk on it. Um, it needs about a fourteen foot retainer wall. They're all over the village, many probably on projects of Mr. Vermeidwah, I would assume. Um, so I just don't understand why that now, non-engineers talking about engineering issues, Mrs. Levy talking about the engineering feat of water and whatnot, it's just inconceivable. I'm not trying to be disrespectful or rude, folks, but this village needs an honest conversation where we're not posturing because we just don't want something. Listen to people who actually have a different point of view. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So anybody else here in person that would like to speak before we switch to the, see who's here online? Okay, great. Mr. Fisher.
Hi there. This is Tracy. Um, I'm actually uh here to talk a little bit about the cell phone policy, so I'm probably a little early, but I didn't know.
No, you can.
Oh, I can.
Yes, please.
Um, so I just heard about this last week. I don't really know what what the board is going to discuss, but I just wanted to say, as a parent of a seventh grader, um, I'm not a proponent of letting cell phones be in the classrooms or be in the school actually at all. Um, when I need to get to him, I can just call the front desk at any time. Uh, he does have a little uh watch that he can talk on, but um the cell phone thing that has um the ability for children to get online where there are no restrictions um is is concerning to me and has always been. In fact, a couple of years ago, before we um uh went into what we've been through in the last three years, um and our teacher, uh Gary Osborne and I were spearheading um wait until eighth, which is um parents getting together and supporting each other to, you know, keep their kids off of cell phones, not have any smartphones until at least eighth grade. And that sort of all had a big kibosh when we went into what we just went through in the last three years. But recently, um, the counselor called me maybe two or three months ago, I think it was before the holiday, and told me that um my son and two or three other children who were in seventh grade were shown something from an eighth grader's phone. Now, my thing is, I don't want my child to find what he can find online, pornography, all that stuff. That's my big thing. Like, don't let these kids be, you know, um, whatever, uh, you know what I mean? Opened up to that world that is is too big for them. Um, but what happened was this person, I don't know who the child was, maybe I should have found out, but I wasn't really the point. He showed these these two or three boys a person on YouTube shooting themselves in the head and killing themselves. Now, that's way worse than porn. And I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe that I was trying to save myself, my son, from horrible things online, but I never ever thought that he would be subject to seeing something as horrible as that. You can't get that out of your head. You know, part of me wanted to say, I need to see it too, so I know that what he saw and what those kids saw. Um, I haven't seen it. I think it would disturb me forever. But anyway, that's the reason, that's the main reason. I don't think children should be allowed to have phones in school lunchtime or anything. They're not prepared, they're not able to discern good from bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we let the next person on, Mr. Fisher, just want to make you know, we didn't get to it yet in the agenda, but the um audit committee is going to be tabled tonight. So if anyone's here for that, you not have to wait. Okay, Mr. Fisher, next hand raised.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Um. This is Janice Dono. Uh, I wanted to speak um even before the the comments that um occurred before uh mine to say that I am still really confused about why the Board of Education has thought all along that it is a good policy to say that it will not answer any questions and really just remain silent when many of your constituents, your neighbors, other parents really want answers from you and it is not good enough anymore to say you're going to acquire the property and then tell us what you're going to do. That just does not make sense and I don't think that you would teach that to your kids in school. Um. There are so many unanswered questions about soil remediation, flood control, whether you're even considering artificial turf, something that the village has turned down multiple times. What your plans are regarding Mash Park, how much it's going to cost, which is something that you've got to deal with the public on. I I think that you cannot continue to say you will not answer these questions. And then there are the more particular things such as um a fourteen foot uh retaining wall and that being considered something that's not problematic in a historical district with no buffering on two sides of what will be a field shoehorned into a space that cannot accommodate it unless more than ninety percent of the trees are taken down. I think it is a, an unreasonable claim to say that we are making unreasonable claims when you will not answer the questions about what this is, what's it going to look like, what's it going to cost and what's it going to be? I urge you to reconsider this. Your neighbors have been able to reach a large number of people and we don't think that we can stop until we get answers as to what this project really will entail. I think that, you know, the amount of money that it will cost has gone up in your own estimations. I've gone back and looked looked at what you've announced the costs to be over time. And I think that our original cost estimates are going to be pretty much on target. So I urge you to stop with the uh tactic of not answering questions. I don't think it can work for you in the long run and I think it's a terrible thing when you're dealing with of this size. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Are there any other hands raised? Mr. Fisher?
There are. Sorry, I can't make it as a Karen.
Yes. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? I don't see myself. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good, okay, because I can't see, I can't see anything all of a sudden. Um, I just, I wanted to uh speak because I we're about to go through round two. I'm afraid of of like, what are the numbers? And everybody's throwing out different numbers. I just want to say I have, I'm looking carefully at everything and this is my honest adding up. I'm at looking at fifteen point one to sixteen point one, what the school has reported. That's the purchase price, nine point three two five, the development, three point eight, according to the February uh eighth H two M estimate and the development uh the development is the three point eight and the uh stormwater management is two. So that's between, is between one and two. So it's between fifteen point one and sixteen point one. Um, and I would be, you know, I I just want to urge you, I have many issues, not just the price, not just the CPF, but on this alone, it's such a huge one with implications. I want to, I hope you're going to flesh out the current cost estimate, at least with some of the potentially major missing items like this, a six foot retaining wall is the only retaining wall that's in the cost estimate and um the renderings show at least a twenty foot retaining wall. How do I get that? The field side of the wall scales at uh at twenty feet if the division street side is built to code in the renderings at forty two inches. Um, so I hope in the interest of transparency and responsible due diligence, um, you'll uh get the public the clearer numbers and I'm happy to yield back the balance of my time if you will just share your intentions about getting the public a more uh fleshed out correction uh uh construction number, a corrected uh construction number. I'm happy to give you back my time if we could just just say that you will or you won't give us any more information or correct any of those errors about the construction cost.
We're going to respond at the end of the public hearing, so you can finish your comments or continue with the rest of your time.
Oh, okay. I'll look forward to your response. Thank you very much for your time.
Yep. Anybody else, Scott? Yeah.
Hi there, Gordon Trotter. Just want to thank the board um very much for getting the self over policy review on uh and in front of everyone. I think it's um as a a parent of a a tenth grader, eighth grader and fifth grader, I think it's really important that we deal with this at high school since twenty twenty. Um. There has just been such a spike. That was the only socialization that they had and I would love to see, especially at the high school level, um, something come of this. I just think there's way too much distraction going on. So I'm really pleased to see that on there and I thank you all for all your efforts on that.
Thank you, Gordon. Anyone else, Mr. Fisher? Okay. Anybody else in this gentleman? Yep, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Grover Pagano. I just want to talk about a couple of things. Uh, first of all, somebody mentioned it's been one year. I mean, it's been two years, right, since uh the school board was in discussion with CPF. And now here we are today and we really don't know what's going to be at those lots. So we can say, okay, that's one thing we don't know, that two years ago we started to discuss. The biggest issue I have is we're using reserve funds to acquire new that then we have to reserve against to take care of. Where does that make sense? How are we going to replenish the reserve funds? You're you're buying more assets that then you have to reserve for and you're using reserve funds to buy it. And then let's talk about the reasons for athletic fields, if we're having athletic fields. One is safety, but we're still going to have to use Mash Park. The other, I think, is is athletic excellence. That one's laughable. I mean, it's laughable. The stories of athletes and what they overcome. And here we are talking about a fifteen million dollar soccer field? It's it's embarrassing. Has anyone here made a nickel in professional sports? Okay, we've, probably some of us have played college sports. You know enough to know that it's 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 something internal that makes champions, not how great your field is or how far you have to walk to it. Then the environment. Does anyone care about the environment? This is started with CPF. Now it's now it's not not CPF because the town board had concerns. And those concerns evidently aren't your concerns. Yeah, I I I agree with I I I agree with the people that are that are against this. This needs to be flushed out before the publics ask for more and more money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Fisher, will you make sure the timer's on the screen, please?
Is there anybody else here for public input number one? Anyone online, Mr. Fisher? Great. Okay, that'll conclude public input number one. Um, Mr. Nichols.
Thanks. I I just want to make the the I don't want to call it a correction, but a statement and perhaps I wasn't clear earlier, so let me restate it. We had been in discussions with the Community Preservation Fund uh for the better part of a year, even though the initial correspondence was in August of twenty one. The earnest discussion started about a year ago. Um, and those discussions centered um on a mutually desirable plan where it would be an athletic field. um, on a mutually desirable plan where it would be an athletic field to be used by the community when not in use by the school. So all those discussions took place with CPF with the understanding that there was going to be a significant contribution. Now that we're not, um, beholden to that in terms of having that, um, agreement, if you will, or understanding with the town, what we're simply doing now is asking the community to acquire the property, and the price tag for that acquiring the property is $9 million uh, three, $275,000, $9,275,000. It's $50,000 in closing costs for a total of $9,425,000. And it's important to remember that absent the requirement to communicate with CPF, this land acquisition is going to start as just a land acquisition, and then there can be discussions with the community about the use, and it doesn't necessarily have to be limited to an athletic field. It'll be a comprehensive discussion about
All of our facility needs.
For the entire district. And so that's, that's all I want to say.
Board members? Everybody?
Well, see, I just, it's important to think about this as a long-term plan. I'm sure all the, the other professionals who are architects and designers and planners would understand that, you know, in looking at a project like this, it's not, especially for the school district. It is a long-term plan, a long-term need. Like I say, right now, the facility needs are looking at it as a field. Let's say 30, 40 years from now, that need changes, the school has the property, it has the ability to, to develop those needs as, as needed at that, which would be way beyond any time we're all still here. So I, I was, uh, very disappointed in the fact that this thing with CPF didn't work out. I thought it would, it originally would have been a great opportunity for, you know, the Community Preservation Fund and the School District to team together. It didn't, it didn't work out. It didn't pan the way it was. Well, at least I envisioned it would. Um, and then looking at the long vision, I think it's in the best interest, long-term, for the School District to acquire it and have the property available for whatever the school needs are, whether it's, you know, field today, ability tomorrow, or whatever happens in the future. So that's my two cents.
In turn, anybody else?
Yeah, and I, I think maybe any other comments on the repeated environmental concerns would be that the school would have gone through all studies needed at the appropriate time.
Correct.
So there's none of, nothing's happening here without all of that being, you know, looked at and gone through properly. Um, so, yeah, I think just the other piece to add.
Sandy or anybody else?
I, I would just like to say that I, I have never believed that education stops and starts in four walls of a classroom. I've always believed that it happens outside on a field, it happens at a lunchroom, it happens in the gym. And to say who's made money or who hasn't, I can name probably 75 to 100 children in my years on the board that have been able to go to college for reduced prices that most families could not afford. So maybe they weren't paid X amount of dollars, but they were able to fulfill their college dreams and do it without coming out with $100 and $150,000 worth of loans. And just to clear the record, I did have not one but two collegiate athletes who was substantially reduced college fees. And we did have a gentleman from Sag Harbor who does have a World Series rings, um, who actually went on to play on an amazing stadium. Um, and you're right, it doesn't make them better if they play on a great field, but it is nice when you have 70% of your fall athletes trying to find a green space to practice on, and we are shipping them all over the towns to play. So for me, it's, it's about children's health, it's about their mental health, it's about getting them off the screens that we've already talked about tonight, and, uh, making them well-rounded students. So we don't know, like we said, what tomorrow's going to bring for that, that property. But this was a need that we had going in, and, and we knew that. So, um, and we continue to have our conversations and keep the doors open. And, um, again, I respect everybody that comes, whether you agree or not agree, and I encourage people to continue to come. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just think to be clear for this evening, um, we're not not answering questions. Those answers aren't available yet. So the fact that you're not getting an answer you want is not in ignoring of your answer or disclosure. The intent of the board right now is to acquire the property. The cost of that property, we're just outlining by Mr. Nichols, it's the property cost plus the closing cost. That is it. Any future school needs, now that we're not restricted by CPF, will be done by open meetings, community forums, and driven by school needs and facility needs, which are no longer restricted due to CPF. That'll happen if and only if we acquire the property. So that's clear. I don't see how there are any questions regarding any development or anything else at this time. Anything is a misstatement to say that we're not answering questions just because you're not getting the answers you want. So with that, we're going to move forward.
We will move on to.
Yep, section eight of tonight's agenda, the Business Administrators Report. Ms. Bushamit.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we're going to have a very quick presentation tonight because um, a lot of things have changed, uh, on the revenue side at least. And, um, we have very, very, uh, small decrease and small increase, um, in the two budgets that we're going to review tonight. And the first thing we're going to do is we're going to tonight, we really want to show everyone what the tax levy impact would be of the, of the increase of 1.88%. So naturally, the most important thing to review with everyone tonight is how that additional tax levy will affect everyone's tax bill. So nothing has changed on this slide since the last meeting. Um, our next budget presentation on April 3rd will show changes to the top of the slide in state aid. So the state budget is due to be adopted on or around April 1st. So by April 3rd, we'll be able to finalize all of our state aid projections. And from there, we will be able to also talk about, um, what our final appropriated fund balance would be and what we would need to pick out reserves um, at that meeting. But for now, the budget to budget increase is 4.75%. Our tax levy limit was 4.16%. Our tax levy increase is well under the 4.16% at 1.88%. And the impact to our taxpayers in Southampton and also, um, East Hampton Town, and this projection assumes no changes in asset values and equalization rates from the current school year. So if you just take a look at, um, the last line and, and both of those charts there, you'll see that a home assessed at $1 million in both towns. Um, the tax levy increase of 1.88% would mean an additional $57, um, per year increase on the current, on it, on everyone's current tax bill, uh, that per month, of course, would be $5.59. Um, that $67 would give us, um, the additional $777,000 in the tax levy to support next year's budget. On the bottom of the slide, you'll see that we will have another proposition on the ballot, and that is to support the Sag Harbor Historical Museum. The Historical Museum is asking taxpayers to, um, set aside $75,000 worth of tax levy. And we projected based on current asset values again, uh, that a house valued at $1 million, their tax bill would go up roughly $6.48 per year if that proposition is approved. Um, this is the middle high school proposed budget. All of the budget notes will detail, um, it, it was sent to the board previously. This is a summary of the budget. You can see the budget is actually declining. We have a $4,000, um, decrease in the budget year to year. Uh, we did have to increase some supply, uh, codes, but we actually decreased a lot of contractual areas. So the budget itself is staying relatively flat. Athletics is also summarized here, and you'll see that, um, the two largest, uh, pieces of the budget are contractual areas. Both of those areas are staying relatively flat. Um, the fee we pay, uh, to use mash park is in those, in the budget code. We also have an increase in supplies, and we also show a small increase in equipment. Um, there are some additional AEDs that we need to buy next year, and, um, there's other, two other pieces of equipment for next year. The budget's going up slightly, a little under $15,000, which is a little under 3% increase in our budget. So after next, after the next meeting on April 3rd, where we are going to review the budgets for special embosses, we will include the full budget detail on the website, so everyone can actually see exactly what is included in each of the notes that support, um, next year's budget. And these are the two additional propositions on the ballot, um, right now. Um, we do have the, uh, proposition to establish the capital reserve, which accounts for equipment purchases and security upgrades. And then, as we spoke about earlier, this is the proposition on the bottom to, um, support the Sag Harbor Historical Museum. So on April 3rd, we are going to finalize the revenue projections, um, and we are going to finalize a budget presentation that and, uh, also present the department budgets for BOCs and PPS. And then we're going to just do a quick review of the entire budget. On April 19th, we will do another review of the entire budget, and at that point, the board would have enough information to adopt the operating budget that evening and also the property tax report card. And then we will also have a budget hearing on May 8th. And the budget vote will occur on May 16th. Um, there's some information on absentee ballots on the bottom of this slide, and this presentation, uh, will be on the website. Um, it's currently right now on board docs, but we'll also put it on our homepage so that everyone can access it.
Great. Any board questions for Ms. Bushamit? I think it's great that we have, we're going out to the public with 1, 1.8%, um, which might be the lowest in the county. I don't know, but.
Yes, it's really lowest on the east end so far, so.
Right, which is great. Not that many pro like that, which is amazing. So, thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Thanks.
Thanks for doing that. Also, just because, you know, we are the lowest on the east end in tax levy. It just proves that, you know, we do a fantastic job managing this district's budgets and costs. So I just want to make sure taxpayers understand that, that we don't take it lightly. Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion for consent agenda items 9.2 through 12.3? So is there a second?
Yeah, is the audit?
Yeah.
Oh, the audit is.
Yeah, 10.1 and 10.2 are being withdrawn until the next meeting.
Being tabled, that's what we mentioned earlier.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we have the chair of the audit committee here. I don't know if she wants to say.
Let's just wait. Let's just wait till.
Would you say 10.1, 10.2, and 10.4?
I am, 10.4, sorry. No, 10.4 is something, that's the, um, that was a monthly report. So 10.4 is good. It should be 10.1 and 10.2.
We just have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Through 10.4, right? Hmm.
So just.
10.4.
No, it was the
No, 12.3.
To 12.3, the exemptions which we tabled were the 10-point to 10-point, uh.
10.1 and 10.2.
Right.
To everything.
Everything else was being voted on now.
Well, I have a, I have a, an issue with 10.5.
So that's, that's open for discussion now, so you can discuss that.
So I, I had asked earlier about the, the educational, uh, perfectness of a trip to a museum park. And I understand that, you know, it's because, you know, the eighth grade, now 10th graders, the eighth graders missed it because COVID. Except to be soon. So, uh, I, I was trying to figure out why we were voting on this as, uh, board on, um, our level. Because I thought, you know, even though the trip might be fun, it seems more to me like it should be something, uh, handled by the PTSA or something like that as a trip for the students, not going to that paying school board level.
Typically, a, a trip of this magnitude would be run by the school board. Um, but I had communicated with Ron, um, and he explained his perspective, and I explained that this, as he just explained, was really a, a one-time, uh, offer as it related to students missing out due to COVID on their eighth grade trip. So they had requested the students the opportunity to go to Washington DC this year as an entire 10th grade class.
Is that or Boston for overnight trips? I mean, they're high school students and high school students on an overnight trip is very different than middle school students on an overnight.
Yeah, and I had explained that to Ron.
Um, but we'll, we'll pull that out as an action item.
I, I just, I just questioned the educational portion of it, you know, in the school, um, making those trips, because the trips to DC or Boston or something can be tied in with, you know, historic, you know, or governmental education. I did make the.
So we'll do this, we're going to have, um, a consent agenda vote for items 9.2 through 12.3, Mary. We've tabled 10.1 and 10.2, and we're going to move 10.5 to the action item.
Okay.
And that's what we're going to vote on now, and then we can correct that later.
Go on 10.5 first?
No, no, we'll do the consent agenda first and then 10.5 next.
Okay.
All in favor?
So. Oh, yeah, we already.
We already moved that, yeah. I was clarifying. So all in favor? Aye, aye, great.
Good afternoon.
Great. Now we will move on to 10.5, which is an action item. Is there a motion for 10.5, which is approve the extracurricular 10th grade trip?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Good.
Discussion we had. Any more discussion? Um, with the manually vote for that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye, aye, opposed?
Okay, we'll see, Carrie.
We're moving on to, uh, section 13, which is our, uh, committee reports. We'll start with the audit committee, if anyone is here and wants to speak on the audit committee.
You're not on the agenda, so you don't have to speak unless you want to.
You don't have to.
Well, I, I can just say that.
You just have to come up to the podium so we can get you. Sorry. You hung out, you hung into it.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Sarah McCallis, the chair of the audit committee. We had a meeting today. Um, that was a great discussion, and we're going to meet again um, in two weeks' time, April 3rd at, uh, 4:00 PM to continue the discussion. So that's why the items were tabled. We just, I'm going to talk some more about those two items. Right, that's it?
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, Policy Committee.
I had a meeting with, uh, Erie One BOCs that was up. Sorry. That was postponed. Um, sorry, don't have the update that I wished I would have, but I had that meeting on Thursday. Um, I experienced a profound challenge in picking up where the committee left off to move the work forward. For a while, I was going down the wrong road of, um, assuming that the work of the committee for the past few years was all in the electronic drive, but it's actually all hard copy, so it's taken a while to get it together. And Erie One BOCs is not happy that it's all hard copy.
I'm sure they want it electronic.
But, uh, I'll be, I'll have a more substantive update the next time, uh, the board needs.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ben. Any other committee reports from board members? You don't have to. We can carry over the rest. Great. Um, hmm. Public input number two. Same rules apply as public input number one. If anybody is here for public input number two, you come up to the podium and you'll have three minutes. Or raise your hand online and we will, uh, recognize you with Mr. Fisher. We'll start with people here. Does anybody want to participate in public input number two? Okay, I see no hands, so we will turn to the online forum. Is there any hands raised, Mr. Fisher?
There is.
Okay.
Donald Smart, please.
Hi, can you hear me again?
We can hear you, Janice.
Okay, um, this is Janice Dano again. Um, I wanted to respond to something that Jeff Nichols said. By definition, the Board of Education cannot make the determination of whether the community is getting the answers it seeks. Only the people who feel that they are not getting the answers can make that determination. I just wanted to point that out. That's called logic. Um, another thing that I talked about, because nobody had brought this up tonight at all, is why is there a plan to abide second to what to make a 70-space parking lot in the middle of the historic district? Um, I think that that really has been sort of overlooked in this whole thing. And that would be a very destructive measure to have a 70, uh, space parking lot uh, with, now, I'm sure you're not going to abide by the, the lighting rules for the dark skies, which I understand schools don't have. which I understand schools don't have to abide by at night anyway. And what you do not abide by in the bus parking lot already. So it's a bit hard to believe that that's something that you would be concerned with. Trees would have to be, uh, cut down for that lot as well. And those boundaries are very close to neighboring properties. Not my own, I would point out, but I think that in the historical district, that is a terrible precedent to, to start. I would also like to get into the record tonight that there was a new sign that went up on the parking lot of the school in the last few days that said, "No parking overnight, or your car will be towed at your expense," I believe. And I'd like to address the board to say, "What's that about?" Um, I think that the, the school board does not seem to understand that it does not act in a vacuum. You are not in a bubble. You are in a historical district of a small, fragile nineteenth-century village, and that is going to have to be dealt with. And a parking lot, and I, nobody said that you're not building a parking lot, so I'd really love to hear what your plans are for that. Um, is something that is a very destructive thing to put in the midst of the historic district. So I, again, would like to get an answer to the parking lot part of this, um, as well as the previous questions that we have asked and gotten no answers to at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. In person, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll turn to the in-person people soon as we finish up with the online folks. Keith?
Hi, it's actually, hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, great. Um, it's actually Jamie Mott, um, zooming in from my husband's computer, so. Um, I just wanted to, to quickly say, um, something, because it has come up in a, in a lot of the meetings. So my background is in, um, landscape design. Um, I was practicing for fourteen years and had to work a lot with the local municipalities. One thing to note, each, um, town out here has different restrictions regarding clearing, meaning how many trees can come down on a property, and it's actually more than just trees, it's underbrush as well. Um, Sag Harbor Village has a hundred percent allowable clearing. So that's a village code, um, that any property, um, would have to abide by, which means a hundred percent clear. So anything that's developed, um, essentially can be completely clear-cut. So I just wanted to note, that's not specific to this project or any other project. That's all projects proposed in the village. So, that's all. Just wanted to add that note. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, okay. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said and address the school board's comment that the, um, environmental concerns could be addressed after the purchase of the, um, after the purchase of the land. But, you know, I also want to ask this, the school district could seek a reappraisal of the Marsden Street property, because your consultant cautioned, sorry, that, um, if you had to move some of the contaminated soil, uh, it would be a, an expense. And in order to install the drainage system that you're going to need, it's very likely that you'll have to remove, uh, soil that is above the contaminant concentrations of unrestricted soil cleanup standards. Um, and then I just want to respectfully ask you to correct me if I'm wrong. Purchasing the land, um, will cost three, nine point three two five inclusive, inclusive of closing costs. Stormwater management is currently estimated at one to two million, and that has to be done no matter what you eventually build. And the only public cost estimate for the scope of work that is the athletic facilities in the parking lot is three point eight four oh. So, um, now the stormwater has to happen no matter what you build, and board has said tonight that there might even be a school there, but, uh, or, or a bill, you know, a school building there, but, um, um, you know, building athletic fields, I'm sure everyone who wants the school to have the land wants the scope, the only scope of work that's been discussed so far. So please, uh, correct me if my numbers are wrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, great. Anybody here? Or come on up.
Michelle Leo, one more time. Um, again, the properties adjacent, if there is a house going up for sale next to my house, you might think about buying it, because maybe I want to do something in the future to have a house for my kids. And if I had the money, I'd buy it. I might not have the full plan yet. I think a lot of people might think about things like that. Transparency is happening. For those of you who say that it isn't, it is. That's just not correct. You might not have liked it in the past, and maybe there have been issues with previous boards, but right now it is happening. The historic district. I get it that there are people who are mad about the historic district and how it might be changed, and I can respectfully empathize with how that might impact you. But I still stand by the fact that the footprint of this school has an opportunity to expand, and I think that that's something that we can't do without. The small, fragile nineteenth-century village, it's really not that fragile. We're doing fine. We have lots that's saved for all of you. You have an entire dedicated committee of Save Sag Harbor for their use and their vision. Why don't, why can't the school just have this? What's the problem, team? You're changing your tactics. It's okay. We're going to keep coming, right? If you, you can do, you can switch the dialogue to the finances, and now you can get everybody appalled about the cup of coffee. Because as Ms. Buscemi pointed out, five dollars and fifty-nine cents a month, I'm in. If that's what we're doing for the tax levy increase this year, thank you for your extraordinary efforts. I've been listening to your budget stuff for so many years, years even before my children existed in this town. And I always think that it's incredible gymnastic performance, and I love it and I respect it. You know, the only scope of work that, um, Ms. Eric Boni just referenced, that the only people who are coming out in support of this want a field, you're actually wrong. There's a lot of people who want so much, but I think what it all boils down to is we want our school to have the property, so please keep going. We're going to get this, because there's enough people who believe in that bottom line. And that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the public wants to participate in public input number two? I think for clarifying the record, the only confirmed number is the acquisition and closing costs. Everything else is to be determined, so. With that, is there a motion to convene into executive session to discuss contracts?
So.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous, we're going to exec, I mean, we're executing, conducting no basis but for opposing the public meeting, so. Thank you and have a good evening.